Fantastic. So, in that case, we have a quorum. Good evening and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin, Town Hall meeting for Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, so I have a few announcements and then we're going to get right into the meat of our Town Hall meeting. We're starting tonight's meeting with some great news. Governor Cuomo announced earlier today that New York State had reached its goal of 70% of adults having received at least one dose of the vaccine. With this milestone, Governor Cuomo has announced that virtually all COVID-19 restrictions will be lifting, which means we can start returning to life as we knew it before March of 2020. Most capacity limits, health screening and disinfectant, disinfecting requirements will be lifted. It seems like a lifetime ago that many of these restrictions started being put in place, and it certainly feels like we can all finally take a deep breath, knowing that so many of us are now protected against COVID-19. CDC mask guidance will still be in place. Unvaccinated individuals must still wear masks in indoor settings, and some stricter requirements will remain in place for healthcare settings, nursing homes, and public transit. The pandemic, of course, is not officially over, but we can definitely celebrate a little bit tonight. These lifted restrictions are only because so many people have answered the call to get vaccinated, over 70% of your fellow New Yorkers, and that hopefully includes you. Now is the time to get vaccinated if you're not. If you're interested in getting vaccinated but have not yet had a chance to do so, many of our local pharmacies are carrying the vaccine. Ovac is also administering the J&amp;J vaccine this Saturday. That is Ovac Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Saturday, June 19th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Austin Farmers Market. So, bring your compost to. Early voting has started across New York State for the primary election. There are 23 early voting stations across Westchester County, and registered voters can walk into any of these sites to vote early. That means you can vote at whichever site is most convenient for you. No appointment needed. For many of our residents, the closest site is the Joseph G. Caputo Community Center in Austin. A full list of early voting sites was mailed to your home a few weeks ago or is available on the Board of Elections website at citizenparticipation.westchestergov.com. Early voting takes place this evening until 8:00, Wednesday, June 16th, and Friday, June 18th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Thursday, June 17th, from noon till 8:00, and Saturday, June 19th, and Sunday, June 20th, from noon to 5:00. Of course, registered voters do not have to vote early. Primary day is June 22nd, and polls will be open that day from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You must vote at your designated polling place on primary day, and the location may have changed from years past, so hopefully you still have the mailer the Board of Elections sent your polling place about your polling place and you have that handy. If not, the Board of Elections has a handy tool called "Find Your Polling Place", which is also available on their website. For Town of Austin residents, which includes all of the Village of Austin, most of the Village of Briar Cliff, plus the unincorporated section of Austin, please remember this primary is only for registered Democrats voting in one or two and one county-wide race. Voting in one or two local and one county-wide race. Town offices will be closed this Friday, June 18th, in observance of Juneteenth. The garbage collection schedule will not be affected, but brush collection will be moved to Thursday instead of Friday. Austin's Second Annual Juneteenth Celebration, which the town is proud to be cosponsoring, will take place on Saturday, June 19th, at Lewis Engle Park, starting at 12:00 noon. This holiday commemorates the day Union soldiers reached Texas to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. The enforcement was delayed by the Civil War by two years, and the holiday was only formally recognized by New York State for the first time last year. The Juneteenth Council of Austin has planned a great event for this year, so thank you to Joyce Sherrock Cole, Alfima Goodson, Diana Lemon, and Juwanda Dabs. And that includes a history of the holiday and spoken word performances and more. The band list for the town's summer concert series was finalized this week, and concerts will begin on July 2nd at Lewis Engel Park, with the Thornwoods kicking off the series, and we'll have more information about all the lineup very soon. Concerts start at 7:00 with food trucks, I think, are going to be lining up at around 5:00. We're so excited to see this tradition returning to Austin after taking a break last year. Mike and Mary Marisco organized a list of local performers and musicians. The Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce coordinated with local businesses to kick off our Food Truck Friday celebrations, and hopefully we'll also see some other local businesses down there. And Sing Sing Kill Brewery will be lining up some excellent craft beverages from local producers for 21 and over concert goers to enjoy. Our fireworks display has been scheduled for the Friday of Labor Day weekend, September 3rd, which will give our community more time to get vaccinated and be a great opportunity to celebrate our workers who've given so much during this incredibly difficult year as they get ready for hopefully a much more regular September. If there is such a thing as regular at this point, I don't know. Speaking of fireworks, we hear that there's going to be some across the river this evening to celebrate the 70% vaccination rate and the opening up and lifting of restrictions. So hopefully we'll get through our meeting this evening in time for everybody to take a look across the river. Our fireworks display draws crowds of around 4,000 people, so we wanted to make sure that people did feel comfortable gathering again with that many people. We would hate to have to cancel them completely. We did have to cancel our fireworks last year, so hopefully that September 3rd date will give kids more of a chance to be vaccinated before we invite them to this family-friendly event. While we're talking about and thinking about our waterfront and family-friendly things, a quick reminder that the Spray Park is open for kids at the southern end of the park, past the playground, from noon to 7:00 PM at our Waterfront Park every day throughout the summer, except for Wednesdays from 9:00 to 3:00, when the Austin Day Camp uses the site starting June 30th and running through August 4th. The beach is not open for swimming because there is no lifeguard on duty and it hasn't been approved yet to be open, but hopefully one day in the not-too-distant future, we'll have something like that in place. Not yet, though. But you are welcome to use it as a kayak launch. If you're planning to use the Brian Johnson Memorial Boat Ramp at the other end of the park, you are required to get a permit. We updated our permitting procedure this year to make it easier for residents and visitors. Daily and seasonal passes are available for purchase online at www.bymypерmit.com/assane. A direct link and instructions are available on the Town Clerk's page of the Town of Austin website as well. New signs with QR codes and easy instructions are on the way. But until then, the website is your fastest way to a permit. Seasonal permits are a great bargain if you plan to use the ramp more, at least twice. Seasonal permits allow boaters also to get a dedicated space for trailer parking. It's great to see so many people have joined us for tonight's Town Hall. Well, so many. I think that's four. But we're excited. That's great. I want to thank everyone and remind you that you can always get updates directly from town departments by joining our email lists and following us on social media. Town Board meetings are recorded each week and uploaded to YouTube. We share information on Facebook and Instagram, and all departments can be reached by phone or email. I encourage everyone here to sign up or follow at least one town account to make sure you can easily remain informed. Public engagement is incredibly important at all levels of government, and our department heads do amazing work. So, do any of my board colleagues have anything to add? Alrighty. So with that, and I actually can't, I have this on the wrong view, so... Let me see. Councilwoman Shaw, do you have anything to add? I didn't see if your head was shaking in attraction. Okay. Fantastic. Okay. So, for this evening, our first topic for discussion is the New York State Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, and what its implications are for the Town of Austin. Per the new law, municipalities can opt out of allowing retail dispensaries and onsite consumption. But if they decide to do so, it must be before the end of 2021. Tonight, we would like to hear from the public as the Town Board considers this decision. But before we open it to the public, I would like to ask our Town Council, Kristi Tomodonna, to please kick off our discussion by framing some of the legal implications for the board and for the public. Turning it over to you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, so I'm just going to do a pretty brief and general overview, and then I'll get into the specific issue you raised regarding the opt-out. Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act was signed by the Governor into law on March 31st. The act creates an entirely new state cannabis law that did not exist before, and this establishes new state offices, a licensing system, and regulates different aspects of medicinal and adult-use cannabis and hemp. There were also corresponding amendments to the state tax law, the state public health law, and a new article was added to the state penal code, and the intent of this law was to create a regulated and taxed cannabis industry and to provide for social and economic justice related to the sale and use of cannabis. So, just a little understanding of what's going to happen at the state level. The MRTA, which is the Marijuana Regulation Taxation Act, established a cannabis control board, and so this is going to be a board established at the state level by the Governor, the Senate, and the Assembly, made up of five members. And these will be the individuals who will be promulgating regulations related to these laws and also the ones who will be issuing the licenses by the applicants as time goes on. There's also going to be administrative office, the Office of Cannabis Management, that will be the administrative arm and will maintain records, inspect the premises once certain applicants are licensed, and also advise and assist the cannabis control board. So I don't want to get too much into the weeds of law because it's quite long and not a lot of it is really... I mean, it's all relevant, obviously, and important, but for the purposes of the discussion tonight, it's important to understand that because the MRTA is governing and regulates cannabis at the state level, unless there's specific authority given to the local municipalities, the field is preempted and municipalities are bound by the state law. So what does that mean in practice? So a couple of instances are: The MRTA authorizes local municipalities to place regulations on personal home cultivation of cannabis, which is another aspect of the law, but the regulations cannot have the effect of completely prohibiting it. So you can put additional regulations similar to what we'll talk about with retail dispensaries and onsite consumption, but they can't have the practical effect of not allowing it at all. In addition, while the public health law already regulates where smoking and vaping of cannabis is allowed and not allowed, the MRTA does allow local municipalities to put more stringent regulations on this issue. So even right now, basically, what the state did was you're prohibited from smoking marijuana or vaping marijuana in any location where you would be prohibited from smoking cigarettes. There are a couple of exceptions, including in your car for obvious reasons. But the town, in addition to still being able to regulate its parks and playgrounds and other town properties, you can also put more stringent regulations on where that is allowed. So that's something that we can talk about more going forward, but that's just another example of some flexibility that's been given to local municipalities. However, with respect to the state penal law, it definitively identifies those activities related to adult-use cannabis that are illegal. So at the state, at the town level, in enforcing those, we are bound by what the state has determined. So, as the supervisor mentioned, and for the topic of conversation this evening, the state has given local municipalities some control with respect to whether there can and will be retail dispensaries of cannabis and onsite consumption establishments for cannabis within the local municipality. So what does that mean? The default is that these establishments are allowed all throughout the state. So the way the law was enacted, anywhere in the state is you're allowed to have a retail dispensary or an onsite consumption establishment. However, there is an opt-out provision for municipalities to elect not to have either or both. So they don't go together necessarily. So you can look at them together and say, "We want to treat them both the same, the retail dispensaries, as well as the onsite consumption," or you could potentially treat them differently. So that's, I think, an important nuance to keep in mind. If the Town Board does not wish to opt out, then there's nothing to do and there's no action that is required because that is the default. The Town Board only has to affirmatively act if it does want to opt out having either one or the other or both of these types of establishments, the retail dispensaries, and the onsite consumption establishments within the town. And another important part to note is that because the town contains the unincorporated Village of Austin and a large portion of the incorporated Village of Briar Cliff Manor, those boards of trustees of those villages would be responsible for determining whether the villages would opt out with respect to these establishments. So any law that the Town Board were to adopt would only be with respect to the unincorporated town. So the process to opt out is to adopt a local law before December 31st, 2021. This would also be subject to permissive referendum. And for a town, what that means is that if 10% of the amount of the electors at the last gubernatorial election submitted petition to the Town Clerk within 45 days of the local law's adoption, pretty much effectively objecting to the local law, then the local law opting out would go on to either a general or special election and have to be approved by the majority of the voters in that election. If no petition is submitted, that meets that requirement within 45 days and having 10% of the electors, then the law would go into effect after that 45-day time period expires. If the Town Board does not opt out by December 31st, it can no longer do so. That's the sunset date for that opportunity. And that's the same for, obviously, all municipalities, village, city, and towns throughout the state. But if the Town Board did opt out, there is always the opportunity after the fact for the Town Board to adopt another local law to decide to opt back in. So that's pretty much the backdrop and the procedure of what would have to happen as with any other local law the Town Board has considered or has adopted. You would need to do a public hearing. It would need to be noticed. And all those factors. And then a few just other considerations that the board and the public may want to keep in mind when you're deciding if and how you want to proceed is with respect to local regulations and particularly zoning. So while the town is not authorized to adopt any laws regulating the operation or licensure of these establishments because that's governed at the state level with the Cannabis Control Board and the Office of Cannabis Management that I mentioned earlier, the Town Board can adopt local zoning regulations and also time, place, and manner regulations with respect to these establishments to determine where it would be appropriate for them to be, what their hours of operation would be, what those types of facilities would look like. Some suggestions I saw were having them be a special permit use approved by the Planning Board, go through site plan approval, as you would with almost all other commercial establishments. But the rule of thumb, as stated in the law, is that these regulations and restrictions cannot make the operation unreasonably impractical. So you can't put regulations that would pretty much effectively, in practice and applying them, eliminate any feasible operation of these types of establishments. The other thing that I mentioned earlier, and that is important to keep in mind, is that while this board can, and the town can, regulate this to a certain extent at the local level, it is also going to be highly regulated at the state level, and that's what all of these offices and boards have been established to ensure. There are going to be regulations put in place by the board that will have to be reviewed and considered and determined to be satisfactory before any licenses will be issued. It is, as far as I can tell so far, and we'll get more information as time goes on, it's going to be a rigorous process. It is going to be a very costly process for people who want to be involved in it. And so it's going to be well-regulated. And as part of the process, any municipality in which one of these establishments, either a retail dispensary or an onsite consumption establishment, wants to set up shop basically or get a license to operate within the municipality, the municipality automatically gets notified within a certain period of time, no less than 30 days, and has the opportunity to provide their response to the state board as to why they think it's appropriate or why they think it's not. And in making its determination, the board actually has to respond to the municipality and explain how it took the local municipality's comments into consideration. And then the other part of this that I think is important for people to remember is that the law provides that the goal is to have 50% of the adult-use licenses be issued to social and economic equity applicants to assist communities disproportionately impacted by enforcement of cannabis prohibition. So that's the goal of this, and I mentioned it earlier. That's one of the big intentions of this act generally, is the social and economic equity justice aspect of it. And then just from a timing perspective, I know I've thrown a lot of numbers at you. The big one right now is December 31st. But just from a practical perspective, given everything that has to happen administratively on the state level with putting this board in place, with adopting regulations before it actually starts getting implemented and licenses are issued, most of the literature I've read has stated that you're not going to start seeing any retail dispensaries until late 2022, at the earliest, possibly early 2023. So there is still time to put zoning in place if that's the direction that the board wants to go in, and that is an opportunity that's available to you during that time period. And just to put the additional timing in perspective, the home cultivation, the personal cultivation aspect of it won't go into effect until after the retail dispensary part is set up. So it's staggered to give the retail a chance to get established before you then have the personal cultivation. So you're looking at an even later time period before that becomes a regular item. And then lastly, and something that I know is significant to this issue, is the benefit from having these types of establishments. And in the law, it does provide that there will be considerable a sales tax that will be available to local municipalities that have opted into allowing these types of establishments. So the way it works is it's going to be, there's a 9% tax at the state level, but then there's a 4% tax at the local level. That'll be sent to the county, here, Westchester, obviously. And then on a quarterly basis, it will be distributed. The county will take 25% of that amount, and then it will distribute the remaining 75% to the local municipalities based upon the percentage of sales that occurred within that municipality. And so what makes this a little bit unique for this town and for towns generally is that distribution. Because if the establishment is in the unincorporated town, the town would keep all 3%, or the 75% of the remaining sales tax. Whereas if it's in one of the incorporated villages, I spoke earlier about how the Town Board can't decide whether to opt out on behalf of the villages, but the way the law is set up, the town will get a percentage of the sales tax from these establishments that exist in the incorporated villages. The first, the initial concept is that there will be an agreement that'll be worked out between the town and the villages about what that distribution would look like. But if there is no agreement in place, it just gets split 50/50. So that's how that remaining 3% would break down. If there's no agreement, I think ideally, the municipalities, if everyone decides to opt in and work together, would come to some sort of arrangement that makes sense for all of the constituents. But that's basically what the state says and what the law says. But what's, so two things to note about the taxes, the revenue from those taxes. While on the state level, it is regulated how the sales tax can be spent, there is no comparable restriction on the local level. So the board can decide how you think it should be spent or how it would be most appropriate to spend it if it comes in the future, right? This only happens if you do end up having one of these establishments that's generating the sales revenue. But there's no set restriction on how it can be used. But with respect to the villages, you only get this revenue if you do opt in. So if the villages were to opt in and the town opted out, the town wouldn't be entitled to any of the revenue from the villages, and obviously the town wouldn't get any revenue from any establishments in the town because you opted out. So that's, and Valerie came on about halfway through, so hopefully she can jump in if she thinks I missed anything or misspoke. But that's pretty much all I have as far as just a background of what we're looking at in terms of what the board's considerations are.
Okay, so just thank you so much for that. I think it was great, really clear. Lots of, I have one quick question for you, and I know we're going to have lots of other questions and lots of time for public, but just to, I think something you said at the very beginning was that the locality can add additional regulations about homegrown also. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think I realized that. So that's, okay, good to know. And then I think that we do know a little bit about some of the state-related, let's just call it zoning, for lack of a better word, in terms of where, what they can't be too close to, what they can't be, you know, advertised too close to. So I'm going to just turn it over to Valerie for anything that you wanted to add in about that or anything else that you think, even though you don't exactly know what Kristi covered, but you did hear most of it, I think. So if there's anything you wanted to add.
No, I was just going to say, I think, and Kristi's right, once you are ready to move forward in your discussions, one of the things we will look at are particular zoning districts and, you know, whether you want to, you know, while there is that, you know, buffer area between the establishments and like schools and house of worship, you can also extend that as well or include maybe some other potential, for example, like nursery schools. They don't necessarily fall under the school definition according to Department of Education. So if you actually look at the regulations, and Kristi will probably, you know, we'll... We can talk a little bit more of that in detail, but there are certain things that might fall through loopholes. We can identify those and make sure that there is that kind of buffer area between those uses and other sensitive, you know, establishments. And then I think also in terms of, you know, other things that you'd want to consider, which is dealing with security, lighting, fencing, you know, there's other elements that might come into play that you're just going to want to make sure that, you know, either your zoning code already discusses those, some of those items, or that you consider incorporating those into your zoning regulations.
And then I guess the other thing that is, you know, would be interesting would be to have a sense of, if anybody knows yet, what a sort of an estimate of what would a dispensary have the potential to earn? So we could get some sense of, you know, even what income we're talking about. Whether or not, you like it or not, I think it's just good to have all of our facts. So I'm hoping that I actually reached out to one of our state legislators today to see if we could get some information about, you know, if they have any estimates or guesses of what a dispensary... Kristi Tomodonna.
All right. I don't mean to interrupt you, and this probably isn't necessarily specifically what you're looking for, but when I have been researching this and looking into it, I did see some sources that were saying that once the system is fully operational and the licenses start running and the dispensaries are up and running, the state was estimating that it could generate close to $350 million a year, and that would generate $75 million for local municipalities generally. So that's just, I don't know what that means on a big number basis, and I think that'll certainly vary depending on type of establishments and the sizes of them. But just on a big picture scale, that was what I had seen.
Right, yeah. Yeah, no, I definitely know that some of those big numbers are out there, but I was wondering if any of the smaller numbers are out there so that we could get a sense, you know, also in addition to understanding just what is the local impact on costs and, you know, how might some of that, if we decided not to opt out, if, you know, that's what the community supports, and we have a sense of what, what's it going to cost us? What's, you know, there's nothing that doesn't cost you something. And certainly, you know, there's a potential that there are enforcement costs and that there could be other costs that are unknown too, you know, traffic, infrastructure, road costs or whatever. Like, you know, we don't really know what that might look like. And I'm having a sense of what revenue could look like. Either because we haven't opted out and both villages were to get dispensaries, but none in the town, or the town would have a dispensary and none in the village, or somebody were to have, you know, a smoke, whatever lounge or something like that. You know, I think it'd be good to have a sense. And the other thing that would be good to have a sense about at some point is what our villages are planning to do or thinking about doing because that would also be something that could inform us in addition to what we're hoping to hear tonight, which is the public and what they're thinking. So I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Valerie.
I just want to just note one other thing because, as Kristi mentioned, you know, it's really the only two uses you get to regulate are the onsite consumption and the retail dispensaries. But there are potentially other marijuana licenses that could be, you know, distributed within the town that you do not get to regulate, then it's preemptive, like, for example, a marijuana nursery. You know, or distribution. So there are other, you know, so these are things that, as we dig into the zoning code, as much as we can't regulate... As much as we can't regulate those, we can also still look at some of your other, like you mentioned, some of the other effects. That could potentially, you know, an effect within the town that we could potentially regulate. Generally, in a particular zoning district, not necessarily targeting marijuana, specific marijuana user license.
Right, and the other thing that I understand is like, you can't zone it, you can't zone it out. Like, in other words, you can't opt in and then make it so that you can't have dispensary anywhere, you zoned it all out, like, because, you know.
However, this isn't the first state that has done this, so, you know, I mean, there are a lot of, you know. There's a lot of information out there about the issues that other states have encountered or not encountered. Based upon different regulations that they put in place. And so there is a lot of data out there, which is also helpful now that, you know, New York isn't the first state to do this. So that will also be helpful to the town as well.
I just wanna say the village, the Village of Austin did have a town hall week and a half ago, I, I guess, or two weeks ago. And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, people who are on this, if you hadn't seen that, that, you know, it's an opportunity to also hear from other residents in, in the town. Who have opinions, so it's good to watch, but go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman Talvin.
I'm just wondering which state is most like our state, I'm guessing maybe it would be Massachusetts. That we would look at for comparisons and, and what they've gone through and what the implications and. The challenges and, and revenue that they've gotten, I thought that might be the one. Do you have any idea if that's the one that would be most like us? I don't think it would be Colorado, but.
No, no, it's not Colorado. No, I think, I think Massachusetts would be a good example. But I also know that Colorado, California, like Oregon, a number of those, Washington, a number of those states. Have had, you know, thought particular zoning restrictions were a good idea, and then it turns out that they, you know, in the long run. It turns out it wasn't as advisable as, you know, as they initially thought. Like, for example, like one state specifically said, oh, you know, marijuana usage should go in the industrial zones. Well, soon enough, they realized putting everything in the industrial zones also put them in areas of, you know, low economic, high minority areas. Not, you know, not realizing that that was gonna be a consequence, you know, so there are things that, you know, other states have learned over the years. To try to prevent, and we will clearly identify those elements as we look at the zoning and potential regulations.
Okay, are there any other questions from the town board, otherwise, or if everybody's okay, then let's go to the public. Are, are you ready to do that? Okay, great. So with that, I'll open it up to anybody who's here who would like to speak. And we're, we're gonna play it by ear, but, you know, at least you can have at least four minutes for right now, how about we say that? Well, we'll start with four minutes, we don't have a lot of people in the audience who look like they're necessarily here to speak. Mike, you might have to observe, but if you are, are here to speak, let's start with four and, you know, we're, we're gonna be liberal. Okay, so if you wanna raise your virtual hand, so that we can unmute you and hear from you.
I just wanna note, I think we have at least one person calling in over the phone. If you dial star nine from a phone, that is the same as raising your hand. So I just wanna note that if somebody's calling from a phone and would like to speak, if you dial star nine, we will be able to see your raised hand. Otherwise, people can use their computer screens, usually under their participant screen. Or in the upper right-hand corner, if you're using a iPad or similar device.
No, nobody? This is, we're giving you an extra long time to change, to say something. We're gonna have to do this again.
Star nine.
Star nine? Yes, no?
Sure, everybody went to see the fireworks.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of people waited.
It's a little early for the fireworks, it's only eight o'clock, it doesn't get dark. No, it's not dark yet.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, okay.
To allow you to talk, you'll just have to unmute yourself and you can start talking.
Hi, everybody, how's it going?
Good, how are you? And thanks for raising your hand.
Someone's gotta do it, right? I just wanted to say I am for allowing both types of establishment in the Town of Austin personally. I think the zoning is a good consideration to just figure out a local way. Feels like it's a way to employ the fact that we all know a lot about our community in areas that may feel more or less appropriate. Just thinking like, my son is at the Austin Children's Center on State Street, which I assume is not. As like, it might be as a DOE school, but, you know, would be interested in something like that, not being immediately near. A dispensary or, or an onsite consumption. And I think alongside with zoning, I'm not sure if it's possible to do this, but to have. Some amount of guidance about the type of signage for these types of establishments. I'm just thinking in New York City, it was sort of overnight when CBD became a rage. And it was like every single window and every bodega was like a very bright fluorescent light advertising these kinds of things. And I'm like all for people getting their CBD on, but it feels like if it's possible to have some sort of tasteful guidelines. Almost thinking of in the state of Connecticut, I think they call them what, package stores or things like that. It's like a little bit of a nom de plume, something like that that we can employ. Feels like a good move, but ultimately, I'm hopeful that the town will see this for what you said, Christie. Is just a great way to embrace minority ownership, which feels very much in line to me with the ethos. Of the Town of Austin, supporting people from all sorts of different backgrounds in a way that is okay for the community. So, uh, thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
Thank you for speaking and very thoughtful comments, we appreciate. Thank you for that, especially somebody with a young child, it's interesting to hear that. I actually do think the children's center, because they, they do run pre- K program for the school district. Probably is regulated by the Department of Education. Just a thought, I'm not positive, but. Anybody else who would like to hop into this conversation and share your thoughts on legalization, opting in, opting out? Well, not legalization, because that's, you're too late for that one, but opting in or opting not, not opting out. Yes, opting out for the town. Some new people are joining, so if you have any opinions that you would like to share with us. Where we haven't had a lot of hands raised, so anybody who might have just joined and wants to raise their hand and say anything. What you think and why you think it, perhaps, to give, to give the town board some guidance would be welcome. Give another couple of minutes for people to not be shy. Do, 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 do. How you doing, Liz? Jackie, good, everybody good? And Christie, I know I'm using first names just because I'm trying to be conversational, just giving everybody a chance. Anybody's there, I know there's at least one person that I know spoke up at the village meeting, so if you wanna speak up at the town meeting. Raise your virtual hands or.
We will, of course, take into consideration what the village, town hall participants said as well, I'm sure.
Hundred percent.
Okay, Jermaine, I'm going to allow you to talk, you'll just have to unmute yourself when you're ready to start.
Welcome.
Hello, how's everyone?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. I just, I've been going back and forth with this and having conversations with this for a while. I am not in favor of opting out, I think that we should opt in. And I think as a village and as a town, we should do our due diligence and put in requirements and zoning. That restricts, you know, how and where the dispensaries operate. I think this has been a long-going conversation for years. The law and stuff that they're putting into effect, you know, we've been having these conversations about what that doesn't do. This law puts into effect the board and establishes some guidelines to put in some of those stipulations, to put in some of the. The mechanisms that's gonna lead to those conversations. I think by opting out, we, we, we kind of kick that can down the road. And we're not part of that conversation, we have people that are willing to be part of this conversation now. And should have been part of this conversation for at least a year or so now, within Austin and probably longer, just in general. I think that the town as well as the village should put into, put into law or mandate. That any shared revenue from the sale of marijuana or dispensaries, or whatever that is, should be used towards efforts to. As use prevention and use into the categories that's, that's around the use of marijuana and keeping minors from using it. I don't think this is gonna be this free-for-all, because one, I don't think our town, our village supports. Having, you know, this random pop-up of dispensaries around that it's gonna be able to sustain. So I don't think we're gonna have this influx, marijuana has been used, I'm not, I've graduated ninety-two, I believe. And they were using marijuana in school then, so that this law and things that they're not putting into effect, it's not gonna change the behavior of, of the kid. The kids are smoking it now, and I think if we partner with some of this and get some of this revenue, possibly could help. To educate, use education and prevention efforts. So I'm hoping that that is something that we can put into writing and put into law and just not have this free-for-all where that money can be used for something else by the towns or villages. That comes in for the revenue. You know, I'm, I'm trying to read through the law now, I know it's a, it's a hundred and twenty pages. I really wanna pay attention to what's taking out as well as what they're putting in, so I can't speak directly to the law. But from what I've read so far, a lot of it, in the beginning stages, is putting a lot of these mechanisms and boards and commissions in place. And that's one reason, I know one of the things we've been talking about is what it doesn't say, what it doesn't state. But part of that is, is putting those things in place to have those conversations, putting the people in place to have those conversations. And I think as a, as a town board and as a village board, we should be able to, to control that narrative from within. And not wait for them to do it, opt in, do our due diligence, put the zoning in place, not around, within, you know. If we say not within a thousand or two thousand feet of a, a, a school district or a facility that has children present. Put it in that it can't be within two thousand feet of, of each other for dispensaries or whatever recreational use facilities there are. And then that limits to the scope of how many can have in the town and how many you can have in the village. So we, we take ownership of what that, what, what's being done at that point. And I, I just think we're, we're spending a lot of resources and effort on this conversation of opting out. Instead of the effort and resources on prevention for use for minors and some of the other stuff that we can be doing. I think, you know, this conversation, it's happening, minors are using it, dispensaries are going up either in Austin or around Austin. So a lot of the efforts, we should be, spend all these man-hours spent on the conversation of opting in, opting out. Should be used on zoning, should be used on laws and prevention for minors. And I think, I think that's the direction we should go in. And I mean, for the most part, I think that's it, I'm, you know, I'm not a user, I'm not in favor of polls either way. I just think this has happened regardless, and I think we should be, do our due diligence, do our work now and to be ahead instead of, you know, kicking that can down the road. And then not knowing who's gonna be in that conversation a year, two years from now, when we decide to opt in. I think we should do all of our work now and to get the, the things in place that we need in place to make sure we control that narrative. Thank you, guys.
I almost wanna like toss a couple of questions back at you, just because I'm curious, and it's not our style. But I'm just, just, would, would you, are you willing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, just out of curiosity, like, if, for example, we were the only two towns in Westchester, I'm just gonna pick out. What if we were just the only two towns in Westchester, which I know is not gonna happen, because I'm sure Yonkers, White Plains, you know, there's gonna be other, there's gonna be other towns, some of the bigger cities. But what if we were the only ones in the area that did allow it? How, how would you, how would you feel if that were the case? And I'm not saying it is or it isn't, but you know, if I hear a little chatter, like, okay, well, we're not gonna opt in, but you know, that's okay, because we're gonna be able to go to Austin to get, to get. You know, shop.
Yeah, I, my thing is that whether or not, if everyone opts out, kids and adults are gonna get marijuana regardless. So the fact that, I, I think the industry is beneficial in a way that it's a brand. When people sell it is their brand, they're worried about the quality of the product that they're selling. When people buy marijuana on the street, they're not worried about that, they're trying to maximize profit, so they cut them with different substances. And the thing that you're getting is not as pure and is, not as good as what's gonna be sold at dispensaries. So I think by allowing them and opting in, you're having people here that's more worried about the quality of the product being sold. Because at that point, some business isn't a resource that they're trying to make, generate revenue from, as opposed to they're getting as much maximizing the profit that they get from this thing. While they can, so I think, I, I, I'm not, what I'm saying is for, as far as they're gonna get it regardless is either legally or illegally. So if we're the only two, Austin and Peace Guild or Terry Town, or whatever that is, then that so be it. But at least as, if we're the ones that are controlling that conversation and we're the ones that putting in laws and regulations in place. That if we are the only ones opting in, that, yeah, we will only have one dispensary, we only have this, when we have that, we're putting in those conversations, those mechanisms. To control what is here. Cause like I said, they're gonna get it regardless, but at least we can control that revenue, that, that, that company, the narrative of where and how many we have. But getting that additional revenue coming, because one of the things we always say as a municipality, as a town, is our resources are limited, the budget is limited. So this is an opportunity to addition, get something that's gonna benefit the community as a whole, as far as the revenue generated from that, for something that's already happening.
And actually, that's one of the reasons that I'm asking the question that I did, which I don't think you heard, but, which is, what, what is our estimated revenue for a community? And you know, so how much is three percent or whatever, per, per percent of three percent of the, what's, could potentially be generated? From, from sales from, just say, one or two dispensaries or a lounge or something like that? And do you have, did you, you, did you weigh in on both? You, you think that they're both good dispensaries and lounges or, or just?
The lounges, I'm, I'm not, I haven't had, I'm really more of the dispensaries, I think. Lounges, I think, is just like the bars and just like everything else, I think if people are using opportunity to use anywhere else. And you have to regulate that, just like you do with alcohol, just like you do with anything else that, that happens in municipalities. You know, we have bars and, you know, one of the things I keep hearing within that is that, you know, when people start using marijuana, you go to these lounges and then they're gonna be driving home. But it's the similar to a conversation around alcohol, you have these bars, we have, how many bars in Austin, and people go and they drink alcohol, and then do they drive home drunk? So now you have, we already have law enforcement in place that monitors people for driving under the influence and things like that. Can we tell, tell the blood alcohol level with marijuana right now? They say no, but you know when someone's operating under the influence. So they're already arresting people for that, and they're, they're, you know, that, when they see someone swerving and seeing someone driving erratic, you, you arresting that person. You, you, you're stopping that person, you observe them, and you say, okay, I'm arresting you for driving under influence. So that, that happens currently. You know, the lounges, I think, are just gonna be something that happens. I, I'm probably not as in favor of having a lounge here, but I don't, again, it's a business, how am I, how am I gonna say that someone who has. A license to operate a legal business similar to a bar, is similar to anything else, which to me does a lot more damage than marijuana, alcohol. But, you know, we allow those to operate and, and that, I don't know how many, how many facilities we have here in Austin. But, you know, I just think, I, I, I'm more, I think that dispensaries are something that I've been having a conversation around more, but I'm not opposed to dispensaries. I mean, to, to the lounges.
Okay, thank you.
I think we just have to control, I think we have to put the mechanism in place in that, some of that revenue also, you know, whatever that revenue is. You know, someone probably is better to speak to those numbers, can also go to the, the devices and equipment that's needed for law enforcement to do their job. So if they need new things to, to be able to analyze molecules in saliva or blood or whatever that is, on, as they're pulling someone over. That, that can be something that's not a burden now on the municipality, at that point, that, that could be generated from the, the industry itself. Similar to what cigarettes does with their, with the additional taxes and things like that.
Sure. All right, fantastic, thank you so much for your, your comments, and thank you for weighing in, we really appreciate it. And is there anybody else from our public who would like to be recognized? And has an opinion that they would like to share with the town board this evening? So I have a few people, um, I recognize you and maybe you came to comment. So I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes to get brief. We're friendly, friendly folk, we wanna hear from you. Really, really, really. Brilliant, truly. Anybody? No? Potential future board member? Town board member, you don't want to say anything?
He's not that silly.
Well, he could just have. Can have a question. You can even have a question. Have a question for the board to consider. Have a direction for us to consider. Okay. Oh. Okay, it's your may. Good.
I'm I'm trying to help the conversation. I don't know. Have you guys considered doing anything where mandate, where within? The conversation around what was going to be written in law or charter, whatever it is, that's going to say that that money has to be used. Towards prevention. Has that conversation come up in your meetings?
Well, this is kind of our first public meeting that we've had about this. We have only asked for some direction from council. Up until this point, and we haven't really had, this is, this is the launch for us to talk about this. So I know I personally think that that is an important conversation to figure out. How any revenue that would come in from this. Would be spent and how it could be back directed back to specifically to the community, whether or to youth activities, to prevention. You know, lots of good ways that we could consider putting this to use, use. And actually, as you were speaking, it did. Make me think that maybe, in fact. We would put in place some kind of. Group that would. Help the board and give direction to the board about how the money should be spent and or, you know, I know we love, we love committees. Maybe we would come up with if, you know, depending on who doesn't opt out or whatever should happen, whatever does happen with any kind of referendum if we. End up with. This being legal, you know, dispensaries and or lounges being legal in town and or village villages. Then it would be great to have some thoughtful conversations around specifically. How the money is spent and also, you know, obviously, obviously, the zoning conversation will come up. I think it's an interesting time for us while we're happen to be in the middle of this comprehensive plan for either our comprehensive plan to consider. Consider it as well. I don't know about the timing of that, if that's going to be quite soon enough for us, but I guess it would be for zoning. Point, point of view, if we do not opt out. But, um. You know, there's a, there's a lot to think about and it would certainly be helpful if. People who are very engaged either in protections for you, you know, for youth or education. Or law enforcement or all of the other pieces that might. Contribute to. Better outcomes for everybody. That if if those, if people could be engaged in the conversation to help direct boards into how we could spend the money best.
Right. And, um, so that. I mean, speaking toward, and that's one of the things which you just mentioned about having that conversation about the comprehensive plan. So opting out and then putting that conversation down the road. That excludes from including elements of this conversation in a comprehensive plan. So that's what I mean by doing our due diligence is now. To have these conversations now while we're putting this comprehensive plan together and trying to finalize it, to put that conversation on the forefront of. The long term plan for the town and the village. And and so I think those elements are some things that have to be discussed now. So I think that's part of what I was just talking about as far as that, let's not kick this conversation down the road. We're putting together these elements to. To form and shape what the town and village is going to look like. So let's have that conversation while we have. People, this conversation at the forefront. So that's one of the things that I really think is important. The other element that I think.
Before you go to the next element, okay. What I want to see is that. Even if, even if we chose to opt out, it's my, it's my feeling. And I can't speak for all the board members, but right now, my feeling isn't that this particular board is like really hot and. On the idea of opting out completely. But some people may want, and we've heard from, you know, certainly at the village meeting, you know, may want more time to think about this. However. No matter what we do, my impression is that at some point in the not too distant future. It it's going to be something that will be allowable either in the village and or the town. And I'm not going to say when, but no matter what, it makes sense. For it to be considered part as part of the comprehensive plan, even if we decided to opt out, it seems to me like the reason. To opt out would just to be by to buy us time to put in place some zoning and some regulations that make sense that we think. You know, would make sense for the town. So that would be, in my personal opinion, the only reason you would, you know, to opt out is to make sure that you get everything right. And. And so there's no reason that you wouldn't consider, have those considerations now as part of, you know. This new law allowing these types of establishments.
And then the the other part of that conversation, which always comes up and. I don't know if opting and opting out is going to help with that, this law will help in some of the mechanisms, is that social justice and inequity and around. The whole industry around criminalization. So they they were moving a lot of elements around criminalization. We pretty much know that the equitable part is not going to come from allowing. People of color and black owned businesses to be within the dispensaries because they just, you would have to have, you know. Enormous amount of money. So it's not, I think people in Austin in general is probably going to be someone from outside. Because there's, I think, two hundred and ten thousand or something, just to get the license, just to operate, to start this conversation around having a business. And then that's not including. The the location, the build out and all of those stuff. So I think. Part of that conversation, and again, this should have, should have been something that's been talked about for a while now, because this conversation has been on the table for years. Across the country and within the last couple of years in New York and Westchester County. Is how can we look at the equity element of, you know, this whole conversation? Beyond just the decriminalization of it, you know, where, where's, what's the next step in that? So what's the aftermath of having the dispensaries? And I think a lot of people are saying opt out because it doesn't benefit the community as a whole as far as the. The minority community, black businesses, Hispanic businesses and things like that, as well as just. The community in general. So I think that having that conversation around potentially also, whether does that revenue help in that element? So I, it's just, it's a lot within that conversation, but I think that that social justice element, that inequity and just. The whole entire conversation around cannabis and in general, I think that's something else we should. We should have been talking about. So again, I I'm not in favor of opting out, I just think. It lends itself and I I think that may be my perception, just dealing with municipalities in general, is that it's always. And something I wrote about is we always have that, oh, we understand, well, you know, we're not going to talk about now, we'll talk about that later or this next time. It's always, especially with communities of color, especially with when we have a conversation, especially around. The black, the black community, black and African American community, we always, we always get that, but. You know, we can't have that conversation now, we'll have that conversation later. And then later comes and we're excluded from that conversation. So I think. As as part of that is that lack of trust with municipalities is while we have people engaged and willing to have this conversation now and and it's at the forefront. That's another reason why I don't want to opt out is I think that. We we are here, let's have this conversation while we have the ability to, because I think when municipalities push that conversation down the road. Then it starts excluding people that should be part of that conversation. So if we do opt out at some point. Like we have to be diligent about including all communities in that conversation and not just do like closed door. You know, village and town only meetings, we have to include the community as a whole. I know I'm talking a lot, so I'm putting my hand down.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Very appreciated. Okay, so is there anybody else here who would like to adjust the town board? Could raise your virtual hand, we'll recognize you. Anybody on the town board who wants to say anything while we wait for people to not be shy?
I think of, you know. I think we need to hear what the villages are doing as well. I mean, it really impacts. What the town decides if both villages opt in and town opt out, then we lose the tax revenue for no apparent reason.
And what if one and one?
Still lost revenue.
I'm just, I'm just being silent to wait and see if anybody else has anything else they'd like to say. Councilwoman Shaw, do you have anything you want to chime in about? Thoughts, questions, anything going through your head?
There was a lot of information. I was actually looking forward to hearing what the public had to say. I did view the village meeting and it was really interesting, so. I'm still percolating, still, it's it's a lot of information. So I guess I'll wait and see. I mean, this is our first conversation about it in a public forum, so. I'm looking forward to others. And thank you, Christie, you gave a lot of great information.
Yes, thank you.
The only thing I will say about the timing that you just brought up, Councilwoman Shaw, is that. Even though we have until the end of the year, and I actually, this was another question I was going to ask Christie is. If, say, we just decided. I'm just going to, you know, we we decided and we have to go through the whole local law process, right? So the local law has to be adopted by. December thirty first, is that true? So say we adopt the law by December thirty first and it's adopted. But there's still this permissive referendum piece that would come after we adopted the local law? Does it come in the between? Like, because I know that we talked, that I've heard that, you know, we need an earlier date. So for example. If a permissive referendum were to be successful in getting enough. Signatures to get a referendum on the ballot and we were hoping to save money. And we wanted that referendum to hit the ballot in November, for example, I'm just saying that were the case. And that, so then we need to know by July? Is that, what's the timing for that?
So, yeah, a lot of things would need to happen. So first, there would have to be a local law to opt out. Then there would have to be the forty five day. So the permissive referendum aspect only comes into play. If the town board does decide to opt out. If you do nothing and just stay in. There's nothing to. Petition on that would facilitate the permissive referendum. So the permissive referendum only potentially comes into play. If the board does adopt a local law to opt out. Then you have the forty five day period during which there would need to be a petition signed by ten percent. Of the amount of people who voted in the last gubernatorial election, only if.
One, I'm sorry, is it just back up to the one piece that I'm still not a hundred percent sure about before we get to the forty five days? Is the local law now fully adopted? So it's gone through this public hearing process a number of times. We've kicked it down a couple of times and. We've now had, you know, a couple of meetings and public hearings and we adopted as a local law and then the permissive referendum or? Is it in that public hearing process? How does that work?
But the forty five day periods for a petition to be filed starts with the adoption of the local law.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, just double checking. Okay, so keep, all right, so forty five days. Now go ahead, I'm sorry.
And then the petition would have to be filed, it would have to be determined to be valid to have. The the adequate number of voters who are eligible to vote in Austin. And then only if that happens, does it get put on a ballot for an election. And if the timing doesn't match up. With a, with the general election, then there's always the potential for holding a special election. But the the deadline is, the deadline for the local law is December thirty first. That is the deadline.
Again, so so say we did adopt the law by December thirty first and then the forty five day clock starts. It's, I mean, if it passes, if it doesn't, then whatever happens would just happen in that next year, for example. So. You could still decide by December thirty first that you wanted to adopt, I mean, to have a local law in place. And then the clock starts ticking for that permissive referendum. You don't have to have the, the vote doesn't have to have taken place before December thirty first.
That is. And again, and it, there is only a vote if you get that petition with ten percent. Of the amount of voters pretty much objecting to the board's decision to opt out.
And is there a deadline for when the vote would have to take, when the referendum has to actually take place after?
I mean, there's, there's timelines in election law if. If we get to the point where there's a petition filed, thus triggering the permissive referendum, I believe it's not less than sixty days. From the date the petition is filed, but. You know, that's something we would have to look at if we, if we end up crossing the bridge.
Okay, just curious. Other questions from the town board? I'm going to give a little more shout out to the, to the public and then I'm going to close this conversation and we'll move on. Is there anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak who would like to say something? Could raise your virtual hand. Questions, suggestions, thoughts? Okey dokey. In that case. Thank you, everybody. We will continue to talk about this and. Probably have a work session to discuss where the board is thinking, in what direction we would like to go. Get some more feedback, maybe a couple more. I'd like just to know what this potential revenue that we're talking about is. And is it worth it? I I mean, there's, you know, a lot of talk about revenue. And what that money can do. So I'm just curious, what what can the money do? And we don't necessarily have a great sense of what the costs or, you know, are to the municipality. And I think that's also information we probably could get from some other municipalities. In other states that have gone through this. And I think that that would also be helpful for our conversation. It's not all about the money, obviously. But money is certainly a piece of the conversation and I think the piece of it that Jermaine brought up. In terms of equity and. Making sure that the money is. Distributed fairly and that sales also and sales revenue also. And businesses can benefit. That's a very important part of this conversation as well. Not to mention all the other factors that really we didn't talk a lot about tonight, but. So with that, thank you all for your participation. Next up on our agenda is a discussion of our proposed community development block grant applications. Which I'm going to turn over to Victoria Cafarelli, who's going to give us a brief overview. And also, as you have seen, Valerie Nostra, our town planner, has joined us. She will hopefully be able to add a little bit more of the conversation. We're going to be holding a public hearing on the final scopes and budgets for these applications. Next week at our town board meeting, so the conversation will continue. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cafarelli.
Okay, thank you. So the last time, since the last time the town board discussed our proposed applications for this round of grants. Our consulting engineer, Dan Ciarsia, and water superintendent Andy Tease. Have been out to the park for a site visit with sort of in the back of their heads what some of the proposed projects that we have discussed and kicked around. When they went for their site visit, they did report back to us that they determined the rip rap was actually in good condition. And it was not in need, in need of any repairs or replacement at this time. So they recommended we sort of push that applicant, proposed application to the side and focus instead on the. Relocation of the bathroom facilities as well as the restoration and rehabilitation of the fishing gears. So we then also spoke to the county because obviously they're a major partner with us. With this funding source about, you know, how we, how best to phase these applications, given we have the opportunity to apply for. Up to four applications with up to a total of one million dollars in grant requests, so about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each application. Over the course of the three fiscal years in the CDPG cycle. So they recommended to us for the bathroom project because that is going to be quite extensive to. Move the existing bathroom facilities to the other end of the park closer to the beach. They recommend that, recommended that we break that into two projects. The first for the demolition of the existing structure and establishing the necessary infrastructure to the new facility. In year one, and I'll just remind the board that CDPG years run May to May. So when we talk about year one, this could potentially be in the late fall of twenty twenty two. With then in year two, for the second phase of the project to actually lay, you know, sort of drop this prefab new bathroom facility. In the spring, summer of twenty twenty three. So even though it's two years, it's not really two park years per se. Then also in year three, to focus on the rehabilitation and extension of the fishing piers at Lewis Angle Park. While we were discussing this with our parks foreman and our recreation superintendent earlier this week. It was sort of pointed out that if we do relocate the bathroom facility entirely to that end of the park, that bathroom facility would not be accessible. A during the fireworks celebration, also for some of the uses that are more close to the northern end of the park. So we've decided that for our fourth application. And this probably will be sort of low priority. So we've decided that for our fourth application, and this probably will be sort of low priority. Um, because obviously the other two projects are of higher priority to consider um constructing a new bathroom and sort of kiosk. Vendor type building, sort of similar to what is at Henry Gordine Park, that would be still at the northern end of the park. To be accessed by people who are coming for the boat ramp, people who are coming for the concerts, some of those uses that are focused at the other end of the park, but. May not necessarily break up our entire beautiful view and serve another purpose as an opportunity for a vendor concession stand or something to that effect. Um, so we have, we're still working out the details on the budgets, but we are probably looking at over these four applications. Sort of maxing out our one million dollar grant request over those three years and over those four projects. So the town will be looking at matching. One to one that for a million dollars. Um, but we also do hope to incorporate into our match some of the. In-kind services of our Parks Department as well as some of the design services of our engineer, um, instead of some of the big capital dollars, we will be hopefully. Sort of passing that on to the county if they do approve these grant requests. Um, so that's sort of where we're at right now, Valerie. I'm not sure if I'm missing anything. Um, or if the town board has any questions about um sort of where we are as we finalize, you know, sharpen our pencils and finalize the details here.
Can we just ask Valerie, Valerie?
Oh, no, I don't have anything. Victoria summed it up very nicely.
Okay.
Did Paul ever meet um that consultant about uh LED lighting and dark skies in the parks?
Um, I don't believe they have as part of this um particular grant cycle. Um, but certainly we can raise that back to the. To his list for um some other opportunities in the future.
We do have a couple of other grant opportunities on, coming on the bend. So, um, you know, we did just learn that um. Uh, that Senator Reichland Melneck has uh some Sam Grant money to dis- disperse and has asked for some applications. So we have, you know, um, opportunity to uh come up with a couple of different applications. And ideas for the senator that might seem um conducive to that uh. State and municipal uh grant funding. That usually takes like, you know, a year and a half minimum to come around, but um, that it's, it's a little bit more liberal and there's no match for that. So we could look at, you know, we could definitely look at the lighting as part of that um grant, for example.
Good.
And uh, the other thing that I just wanted to mention and just remind everybody that. Um, you know, I, I don't think that, you know, we did talk about a prefab bathroom. Uh, we were looking at the possibility of mostly um, you know, gender neutral. Uh, stalls with possibly some urinals um to make for a more efficient use of the space. We talked about uh the need for outdoor showers. We're hoping, as I mentioned earlier, that we will have an opportunity. To work on a beach opening in the not too distant future. And this is with that in mind that we would have. Most of, you know, we would have the facilities down at the end of the park where, there really is the most activity during the high season. Um, but again, the idea of having a kiosk or something similar with, you know, maybe one, one bathroom in it. Um, at the north end of the park is certainly something that is um. You know, we'd like, instead of having to plop another porta potty down there because we don't like them and they're not nice and they're. Hard to keep um clean because the companies don't tend to them when they're supposed to. So. Yeah, there's some of our challenges, unfortunately.
So um, one, another question, uh wifi in the park, that's like a big priority. We're working on that separately.
Correct, that was. We did an application under the COVID round of CDBG. Um, we haven't heard definitively if we've been awarded that funding yet. Um, but we did submit that application a couple of weeks ago and we're waiting to hear from the county if they're going to be allocating um. Those resources to us, which would be very exciting.
Yeah, I think that will do one, that's one of the things that the residents ask for all the time, that they'd really like to be able to work down there. Um, and we just don't have wifi in that park, so. And also, I mean, while we're moving the bathroom, um, the village can keep open their little kiosk bathroom at the north end, so.
Yeah.
Correct.
In theory, maybe all guys will open the, up the door to the. OBCC too and let people use that.
That's not a theory. Not during COVID. Hopefully we'll be done.
Talking about in a year and a half. We're talking about, you know, or a year, a year.
Well, I'm sure we can probably stage everything so that there's, you know, the least destruction possible.
Yes, absolutely. Questions, discussion? It's town hall meeting. If anybody from the public wants to comment on any of these uh, or has any ideas or thoughts? Anybody who loves the waterfront? I have to say, we have a new pollinator garden down at the waterfront, right by where we're talking about it, Lewis Angle Park, and it is beautiful. Thanks to uh Zoe and Alessia and uh some of their friends in there. Hopefully we'll be earning their bronze award from the Girl Scouts soon. Uh, but I want to just give a shout out to, to them for all the great work. We also had an Eagle Scout project, which I think is finished now at Sally Swope Park. And that's also basically pollinator friendly garden, I believe. Um, all of these are non-invasive plants, they're native species and. They attract pollinators and that's something that's good for our earth and we are very proud of our community for really paying attention. Thanks to Margaret. Philan as well as Donna Sharrett for their help in consultation and uh for all of the, the Girl Scouts uh. Parents who also came, came out and helped.
I also want to note in the, in the fields of thinking about our earth, um, our, since we have our engineer Dan Ciarcio working on this project. He is evaluating very closely where the flood plains are and where the hundred year flood zones are in the park. Um, so where we would be placing these structures, um, you know, as he's sort of looking at it and making recommendations for us for. Any sort of site improvements that might be necessary. He is looking at that very closely, so he makes sure that whatever we place, we're placing it in, in, in area that. Um, is, is generally flood safe.
Right, and uh, or close enough so that if there'd be minimal regrading on the site. But instead of having to actually put it on pillars or those kind of structures.
Exactly. And of course, we want to make sure that everything is ADA compliant and. Family friendly. Yeah, some of those things we're talking about is making sure that there's a little changing, changing station for babies, changing areas. And I think that's it, unless that maybe else again has anything. Anybody from the public want to say anything? Anything at all? It's a town hall meeting, you can talk about anything you want. Do, 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 do. So maybe so? Questions from reporters? Okay. Hearing none. I think I am going to have to ask for a motion to go into. Executive session for advice to council personnel and collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Anybody post? Okay, so thanks for joining us tonight. Hope everyone stays cool these next few days. I, I hope it stays as cool as it was today because this is absolutely lovely, no humidity, my favorite. Our next meeting will be on Monday, June twenty first. Not our regular Tuesday schedule because of the final day of in-person voting for the primary election. Please join us next week on Monday, June twenty first for a legislative session. We are not certain of. The impact that today's news about COVID nineteen restrictions lifting will have on our ability to hold remote meetings. The executive order allows remote meetings at least until July fifth. So next week we will continue remote and we will provide an update as we get more clarity from the state. Please remember we are closed this Friday for Juneteenth. Uh, please remember to vote. Hope everyone has a joyous Juneteenth. And wishing all the fathers out there, including our own, who right here on our town board, who seem to not be here this evening. Councilman Welter and Councilman Meyer, a very happy and celebratory Father's Day. Have a great night. And we will see you soon.